The public is allowed to speak on issues or items that are not scheduled for discussion on the agenda. Comments should be limited to issues and items germane to the business of the governing body. The commission will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the commission make decisions on items presented during this time. Members of the public will be limited to three minutes for comments. Would like to start us, would you? You've been waiting patiently, sir. Please go ahead.
I feel like I should apologize. I don't know what I'm apologizing for, but it shouldn't be this rough for you guys to have to do city council. And we do have freedom of speech, but it's just I what I've witnessed here tonight is really sad, and I'm sorry that this is happening. Um, this is a letter. This concerns an incident when there was a military fighter jet that flew over town. And I got to witness the whole thing, and it was on September fifth. And this is a letter that I wrote to our chancellor, which I delivered to him on the eighth of September. And I'm going to read it, and I informed him at that point when I gave it to Douglas that I was going to read this at city council because this is totally important, and it was very scary what happened. Um, Douglas, on Thursday, September five, twenty twenty-four, at eleven twenty-three A M. An aeronautical incident occurred over the city of Lawrence. The maneuvers, the maneuvers performed by the military aircraft left me in grave concern. Filing a complaint with the Lawrence Police Department, file number L two four zero four eight one nine seven. The Lawrence Police Department had no prior knowledge of military flyovers that would have been scheduled. Local newspapers, radio stations likewise had no forewarning of any military flyovers scheduled to occur. I thought, how could this be? The shock and awe of such an incident can affect certain people mentally as well as physically, such as panic attacks from past military service. And on readout, I'm broke from the letter for a minute. There was a man with his newborn infant in his hands in his backyard when this thing flew over. Now I'm going to try to track down this family and this child. If that child's hearing is impaired for life for what happened. This is serious. This is really serious. Um, I would place a phone call to the Topeka Regional Airport, Forbes Field. And I would speak to Eric Johnson, president and director, and ask him if there were any fighter jets based in Topeka. His answer, no, we have a refueling wing here of C one thirties. I told him that there was some sort of a fighter jet, and I don't know fighter jets, some sort of a fighter jet straight to the city of Lawrence. Eric would reply, it was an F fifteen. He knew because it was buzzing around Topeka. So he nailed us in Lawrence, and then he went on to go and get Topeka. I shared, oh brother. I shared with Eric that the jet flew over the top of the Oriad in Fraser Hall.
Hey, Daniel, you've reached time, but we do have, you do have your documents. And so we do have them in front of them so we can read them. But unfortunately, you're out of time right now.
Right.
Thanks.
So, thank you, thank you for.
I would like to say a prayer.
Uh, sir, sir, sir.
I'm going to pray to Jesus Christ, and I am praying that literally all of the victims.
Sir, sir. Sir, can you go ahead and take that, that prayer outside, please? Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rowan Shering. I'm a Lawrence resident, uh, six, six, zero, four, four. Um, it does not help unhoused people or the broader community to sweep Amtrak. If you.
Yes, I believe.
If you Google, do not. If you Google, do camp sweeps help solve homelessness? You'll see nothing but article after research paper after report repeating that, no, they don't. Sweeps do not meaningfully increase emergency shelter usage or address the issues that make encampments necessary. Most of the people I remember from when I worked at the North Lawrence camp remain in unsheltered homelessness after that camp was closed. Several of them moved to Amtrak. How many times are we going to displace the same people? The city's release announcing the closure said the goal of this effort is to help each person living at the camp exit unsheltered homelessness back October fifteenth. As we've gotten closer to that date, and it's becoming increasingly clear that not everyone there will exit unsheltered homelessness by then, why is still planned a sweep on Tuesday? If the goal is to help people exit unsheltered homelessness, this sweep is actively detrimental to that goal. If we continue to close camps without first actually helping people experiencing chronic unsheltered homelessness to become housed, we're just adding to harm with these closures. Instead of sweeping the camp, we should use our resources to address the problems that make encampments the best alternative among a limited set of options for the most vulnerable people in our community. Please don't close the camp until it's empty because everyone there has gotten into a better living situation. Thank you.
I'm Malcolmie Ronoke. Um, so I can't tell you guys anything that you don't already know. Um, but so instead I'm just going to read from the, uh, brief on sweeps from the National Healthcare for the Homeless Council. Um, sweeps do not end homelessness. Grassroots leaders and direct service providers understand that encampment sweeps cause four general problems. Sweeps damage health, well-being, and connections to care. Sweeps compromise personal safety and civic trust. Sweeps undermine paths to housing and financial stability, and sweeps create unnecessary costs for local communities. More in depth, they destroy items needed for survival, cause trauma, and worsen mental health conditions. They destroy life-saving medications and medical equipment. Sweep sever connections to care. They undermine trust in service providers, increase arrests and assaults of residents. They contribute to drug overdoses, and they push residents into more dangerous, isolated environments. They cause widespread fear, increase hostile interactions with police, disproportionately impact B I P O C groups and people with disabilities, violate rights. Now I've been reading bullet points here, but I'm actually going to stop and read the whole paragraph on violate rights because I think it's important. All people living in the United States are protected under the Fourth Amendment of the Constitution from unreasonable search and seizure. And by the Eighth Amendment from excessive fines and cruel and unusual punishment. Seizing property, imposing a fine, and/or arresting someone because they were existing in a public space violates their rights. Back to this bullet point here, they contribute to stigma. Sweeps destroy vital records, which makes it more difficult for people to then go get jobs. And they prevent gainful employment. So here it says, uh, sweeps destroy tools, uniforms, and other job-related items, which often cannot be replaced and may result in job termination. They create criminal records. They jeopardize housing opportunities. Sweeps undermine the likelihood of obtaining permanent housing. They sever connections with community, damage hope, cost millions of dollars, increase incarceration costs, undermine population health goals. So from this report, it's clear, and this is one of many, I could have picked any of a number of reports that would say the same thing. Sweeps don't work. And I'm very disappointed to see that we are still, uh, pursuing a sweep on the fifteenth of the Amtrak camp. And I once again urge that we postpone the sweep until it is because the residents no longer need the Amtrak camp or avoid the sweep altogether. Thank you.
Uh, Patrick Ross, six, six, oh, four, nine. Uh, I've got another lovely poem for you guys. Uh, it's called Orb Weaver Spiders Write Letters in Their Web. Transformation is the goal. Chris Flowers is a flower. Remember that spider the flower was talking about? Think of its web. How long do you think it took to weave? A cyclist rides past. It's cold, so he rides harder. What do the spiders do when it's cold? The cyclist is encouraged, the city wants to build protected bike lanes. He gets home, it's warm inside. He thinks about the individuals covered in blankets outside of city hall. He startled them when he unlocked his bike. The woman he had met after the last meeting awakens, fearful the cyclist was one of the people who steal. She recognized the cyclist from last time when she told him what it's like being unhoused in Lawrence. Blankets act like camouflage hiding the woman and her partner from the passing commissioners. The commissioners admitted to the public that they too are cyclists. That's transformative in a world dominated by cars. Spiders ride the wind by holding on to their web. They travel great distances this way. Some even cross the country. Imagine the wind blows you to Lawrence. You find refuge there. Imagine a broom sweeps up your web. You were saving a bug for later, for when you were hungry, but now it's caught in the bristles of a broom. The dust the broom tried to rid itself of returns a few days later, so too does the spider. It builds another web. It missed a meal a few days back, so now it's tired. The spider goes to a city commission meeting and waits for hours until the broadcast ends. During public comment, the spider pleads for the October fifteenth sweep to be stopped. The spider does not feel its pleas were heard. It's nighttime on ninth, and a man is yelling. An ambulance and fire truck pass. The man drops his hat in front of a spider. The spider hands him his hat back. The man cries and tells the spider that sirens remind him of the night he was stabbed. Five minutes pass when a police officer follows the path of the man into the alley. What if all of Lawrence cared about spiders? Would they help them build their web or only offer them money? What if the army of K U students took turns listening to the spiders befriending them and offering help where they could? Would the students learn about life from the spiders? Would the spiders finally feel heard? Transformation is the goal. Thank you very much.
So I want to publicly thank Jay Armbrister for arranging a good thing at the jail today. He knows what I'm talking about, and that's enough that needs to be said about that. Um, but I want to also advise you and Craig that you guys are going to need to be terminating Brian Jimenez from the planning department. I'm understanding that he is your assistant director in start, in charge of building safety. And how fucking ironic is that? I got a video sent to me today of Brian Jimenez beating a homeless person out in front of the planning department. I'm told that there's other videos. I'm told that there's several witnesses. I'm told that there's a police report made. I'm told that his ass is going to get fired. The public is going to demand that his ass is fired. You cannot have a place for everyone when your city staff is beating up homeless people. That's what happened today, guys, today. Between ten and eleven, twelve, somewhere around there this morning, still tracking down the guy. But you know, like I said to somebody here a while back, I've given up on your processes. I've given up on any kind of form of a complaint process. I got doubts whether Brian will even be held accountable for what happened right out in front of his fucking office, Craig. So instead I help them, I help people find attorneys. So Brian Jimenez has earned you another lawsuit. Because I'm going to find this guy, and I'm going to connect him to the civil attorney. And you guys are going to be done fucking with the homeless people around here soon. The same month that you guys try to claim on that website that you've got all these people housed. They can come up here and talk all these numbers with you guys, but I'm telling you right now that they're housing people, this permanent housing stuff, it's not coming from the street. They can play it off like this, these people from the street are getting all these services. And I loved how they come up here and say, well, we helped all these people. They act like they helped them. Half of them are still on the street and going to get swept again. What's happening with James Chisholm? You guys asked any questions about him telling a rape victim that, well, you're not being raped now or, or letting her hear that, hear him say that? Why is that motherfucker still employed here? We just gave him six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, right? Last week? How much more are we going to give him while he does this shit? You guys need to take care of Brian. Because the video is going to come out in about an hour.
My name is Dr. Justin Spees. Looking for an explanation from you guys. Earlier today, I was in here speaking during this meeting. I was interrupted multiple times while I was speaking. One, uh, pretty severely where, uh, the lady was able to call out and say that I shouldn't be allowed to speak, and then Bart was able to have a little back and forth with her. Um, you did tell her that she needed to stop, but why wasn't she, uh, under threat of arrest to be, to be removed from, from this meeting? I'll remind you, a couple of weeks ago, I was standing right here at this podium, and I was speaking about the lawsuit that I filed against you guys. And Bart, you stopped me and said that it wasn't germane. When I tried to explain my case to you and be like, what are you talking about? This lawsuit is against the commission here. It's certainly germane. You said that I was being a disruption, and you were going to have me arrested for it. So sitting here within, I mean, just think about that. You set aside three minutes, so once the three minutes starts, you can't be a disruption because it's, it's your three minutes. You can say that it's not germane, but talking about a lawsuit against you guys is certainly germane. So if during your three minutes, if, if a speaker's during their three minutes can be a disruption to a meeting when that meant those three minutes are already set aside for them, and they can be arrested for it while speaking, then certainly somebody that stopped me while I was speaking should definitely be considered a disruption to the meeting. Why isn't that a, a disruption that gets her removed by the police? How can that possibly be? That a speaker during their time is disrupting the meeting when you've already set aside the three minutes for them? You stopping me while I'm speaking is a disruption of the meeting because the three minutes is part of the meeting. So you, every time you stop me, you're disrupting the meeting. That cop right there, a couple, a couple meetings before that came walking out of this, uh, this room here up onto the stage, up on the podium when Michael was speaking and just started talking and then came up to you and said, do you want to have Justin arrested? And you said, no, this is all during general public comment. How is that not a disruption? Why doesn't he get removed for doing that? Why don't you get removed for disrupting the meeting? Just looking for a little, uh, equality around here. And, and speaking of that, a couple of meetings ago, Courtney Shipley was in here speaking, and Bart, you stopped her as well. And, uh, Courtney immediately responded and said, no, Bart, I can speak on this because you've allowed other people to speak on that. So that's again unequal protection. So a question for you guys. If Courtney were to see you guys, do you think she'd win? Do you think she's got a lawsuit right there? And if Courtney, if you're listening, why don't you go ahead and sue the commission for, uh, for violating your right to free speech and unequal protection under the law? He stopped you, and you had a defense that no other people were able to speak. Why can't I?
Hello, commissioners. Uh, hello fellow citizens. My name is Darren McQueen, six, six, zero, four, four. I'm a Lawrence homeowner and army veteran. It's my understanding that the city commission intends to close Amtrak homeless encampment in one week, October fifteenth. Over the past few years, I have worked with the homeless population in Lawrence in a variety of capacities, including the city sanctioned camp at Woody Park and the new beginning city sanctioned camp in North Lawrence. And between these camps, I worked for the winter emergency shelters and on a homeless outreach team where I had the privilege to work with unhoused individuals behind Amtrak as well as other various camps in Lawrence. I have witnessed the city close these camps and destroy unhoused individuals' belongings on multiple occasions. Every year or so, the city picks a camp in town to close, and every following year, we have the same issue. There's another homeless encampment that appears somewhere else. I believe that this strategy is unethical and unbecoming of our city. Rather than inflict unnecessary pain on our unhoused population and destroy their belongings, we should be listening to subject matter experts. No serious professionals or advocates in the homeless services field would suggest the destruction of an encampment as a solution to homelessness. In my experience, closing homeless camps only hurts those that stay there and rarely satisfies the city's goals in any meaningful way. These camp closures often contribute to the cycle of homelessness and merely displace people rather than fix their situation. I ask you all this. Where will these individuals go when the camp is closed? Will they establish a new camp somewhere else in town? Will they suddenly become housed? The strategy I urge the city to take is to sanction one or more camps in the city, suspend the destruction of camps, invest in more affordable housing, provide additional resources to those who need it. Ultimately, I understand the city is receiving pressure to close these camps. However, I ask this commission to suspend the camp cleanup until those who are staying there obtain the services and housing that they deserve. Please consider what I've said, and thanks for your time.
All right. Not seeing any additional public comment here in the room. Okay. Cherry online?
Stephen Watts.
Hi. You know, to start off, I have no idea what the hurry is for Lawrence to convert to electric vehicles so quickly. Perhaps it was all giddy, you know, four or five years ago, and, and it has to happen.
Mr. Watts, can, can you go ahead and not refer to anything that was previously discussed?
No, sir, this is, sir, this is my public comment.
Yes, but that was.
So I have to wait until next, stop the clock, please. Reclaim my time. So I have to come next week to talk about what was talked about just a few minutes ago? I'm asking.
Sir, there is an opportunity to go ahead and talk about that during the item discussed.
No, it wasn't. This information didn't come off Bart until after the talk was done. That's the problem with this. I'll do it next week. I want to know, well, on September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, the town meeting saw four commissioners sit mute while sellers provided a lone opinion about the outsider that's been allowed to be appointed to the Affordable Advisory the homeless, the Affordable Advisory Committee for Housing. Why are you doing this? This person does not meet the qualifications that you yourselves have established. Why am I assigned to ask you, when are you going to talk about and vote for this? I know that you're just going to make an exception, but you need to follow the rules and regulations and make that exception and state why this person who doesn't live in Lawrence and this person who has no businesses in Lawrence has been appointed. You know, initially I thought maybe just people didn't know about the, the, the address. But now I believe you knew full well and good when these appointments were whopper jawed and combined into a one mass appointment that you slipped it in. Come on, man, that is not right. And, and this, this asinine thing that I can't talk about an opinion with, with respect to, uh, the town conversion of electrical vehicles in my public comment. Incredible. That's all for now. Please get in note. I see, by the way, that there was a, uh, a December ten meeting about boards and commitments. No, we're going to be continuing to talk about this, Bart. And as the mayor, you have an obligation to set the town agenda. It isn't done by the city manager. That's one of his jobs, but if you want it put in there, you tell him that. And the same with the other commissioners. Each of you can put stuff on the agenda too. Thank you. That's all.
Jeffrey Hepler.
Good evening for the final time, mayor, vice mayor, commission, minus Amber. Um, I do want to take time to thank you all for your work and for your service. I do appreciate, despite my criticism, but somebody's got to be out here doing it. Um, y'all need to stop the sweep. You've heard time and again, meeting after meeting, plenty of good reasons why not to do it. When y'all closed the camp by Johnny's, we had folks camping in our school grounds in East Lawrence because they were displaced. That will happen again. Another thought that comes to mind, um, the definition of public comment is that anything that is germane to city business is permissible in public comment, even if it is a previous item in the agenda. Lastly. You know, I'll, I'll, I'll stop there. Thank you all for your time. Have a good evening.
Julie Jones. Julie Jones, six, six, zero, four, seven. Kind of think the whole meeting tonight was a mess. Um, out of order, not good. Um, left me with a lot of questions and research I'll be doing as well. And I guess I recognize they're converting the homeless shelter into a long-term, they don't have to leave shelter. So you've got a hundred and seventy-five people who could live there. And then the, uh, pallets behind there will be the short term where they'll be bunking up with a stranger. What I don't understand is, and nobody seems to have gotten down to asking the homeless, why don't you want to move there? What is it that's so bad about the shelter that you don't want to live there? You could move in, leave your stuff there. I hear that staff goes through and steals their stuff, so that's why they don't want to go in there. Um, and then they can leave the building, go out, do their drugs and come back in. I mean, if you're an addict, you're an addict. You can't, you can't stop them unless they choose to stop. Um, we have sixty-one people so far this year that they say have been sheltered. We're way behind on their schedule. We should be up around a hundred and I figured out the other day, we should be up at a hundred and twenty if we're, we're going to meet the goal. But we don't have the housing for them to move into. Maybe that's what they're going to do with the city building is move out of that and turn it into a homeless shelter. I don't know. It's, I don't like living in a town where I have no idea what's going on, except my money's going out the door. It's very frustrating. Thank you. Chris Flowers. Chris Flowers.
Governor Von Mayor or?
Yeah.
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I just, I wasn't planning on speaking, but I just had, I'm, I'm asking that you stop this sweep, uh, next week. I think this might be your last chance to do it. And I, I just wondering how many of y'all are atheists? Because if you're not, uh, what does this mean for your souls? Um, if, if, if you're going to ca, you're going to cause a lot of hardship for people. And I just wonder, I mean, if any of you all, all are Christians, what would Jesus do? Would Jesus sweep the homeless camp? Or would Jesus just let them live there? Um, I just want to say, I think this, if tonight's your last chance to stop this, then this is the last chance to save damage to your souls and not disappoint God or Jesus. Um, the sweep is unethical. I think it's unconscionable. So I just want to throw that out there. This is your, it's, it's, you'll have to live with your conscience with whatever happens. Thank you.
One more. Bob Isaacson.
Bob Isaacson?
I don't know if I'm up, uh, in queue. I'm assuming I am. I haven't heard. I'm having a little bit of a slow connection. I, I would just like to speak, uh, to the defense of the appointment of Aisin Hong uh, to the Affordable Housing Advisory Board. She has great expertise. She is faculty in the School of Public Affairs. Her research background is, is in housing policy, housing, community development, neighborhood revitalization, et cetera, et cetera. So she does bring a, a measure of expertise despite the fact that she may not reside here. She does, uh, work at the University of Kansas. So I think she does bring, uh, a dimension of expertise that I think is really, uh, useful for that board. Thank you for your service. I hope you were able to sleep well today.
All the comments, Mayor.
Okay, miss back, entertain us, entertain it. I can't talk. entertain a motion.
Move to adjourn. Second motion.
Uh, first and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, that's four in the affirmative, one absent. Thank you all. Have a good night.